Ready? Call the meeting to order. Amy, would you take role, please?
Absolutely. Commissioner Dibdog?
Here.
Commissioner Wolf?
Yeah.
Commissioner Wire?
Here.
Commissioner Verch?
Here.
And Mr. Mayor Lindsay?
Here. You have before you the agenda for this evening.
Make a motion to adopt the agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Is there anything anyone wants to discuss on the consent calendar? If not, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Under unfinished business, second reading of ordinance number one six eight two, amending the 2025 budget appropriations ordinance number one six seven two. And Jameson, you want to address that?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is second reading of an ordinance that makes a correction to our current year budget. This is the 2025 fiscal year budget. It removes $175,000 revenue that was shown under the second penny sales tax fund. That was a mistake that we caught when we were preparing this year's budget. No changes from the first reading and staff recommend approval.
Questions, comments? If not, do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve the second reading of ordinance number sixteen eighty-two, amending the 2025 budget appropriations ordinance number sixteen seventy-two.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Number nine, second reading of ordinance one six eight three, 2026 budget appropriations. And again, Jameson, would you address that?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So now this ordinance is to set the budget for 2026. This is the second reading. There are a couple of small changes from the first reading, which I'll go over now. First is we have adjusted the payouts that we're expecting in 2026 for any retirees. That is an increase of about $32,000. Insurance is a second change, so we have adjusted that to include a projection for insurance increases of about 14% just under that for all departments, so that increased $47,000 throughout the budget. And then the final change was $25,000 for a water and sewer rate study. We thought that that was included in the first reading, but after looking through it again for a final time, we realized that the $25,000 was not included in there, so that is split equally between the water and the sewer funds. These are minor changes, so we've confirmed with the city attorney and he agrees that this isn't substantial changes. If they were substantial, we would need a third reading before approval. But since they're not, the second reading would be the final approval unless you make any further changes tonight. I'll stand by for questions.
Questions or comments?
Is the intention for that to be covered by the contingency fund?
No. So the expenses were increased for those items. In some cases, like the insurance, would have been adjusted through all the departments that have staffing, that have insurance expenses. So the contingency fund would still be available for unexpected changes in 2026.
And the insurance increases to group insurance, which includes medical, dental, life, not property insurance, just to clarify.
Other questions or comments? If not, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve second reading of ordinance number sixteen eighty-three, 2026 budget appropriations.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Number 10, discussion and possible action regarding maintenance or demolition of the 504 Northwest Fourth Street water tower. And Jameson, would you like to start?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last meeting, we'd continued our conversation on the future use of the water tower, whether we wanted to look at demolition or to maintain it. I'll remind the group that the water tower isn't used. Once we had built a new water tower and that was online in industrial park, this one was emptied and taken offline. So that's the question still, and so I included the staff memo from last meeting in this agenda packet as well, so you have the same information. Last meeting, I know there was a desire to get more public feedback on what the public would like to see us do with this water tower. And so there's a new memo that overviews the public feedback that we received. We had 35 responses, including comments on our Facebook post. 14 were supportive of keeping the tower or maintaining it, 7 for demolition, 7 did not specify clearly. Although I'll note that although we included a link to the staff memo that had the options and we put a summary comment in that post to try to explain and summarize what the situation was, it was clear there were still several people that were wanting to see one option versus another that didn't have a clear understanding of what we were looking at. Several folks still think that the water tower is in use. It's necessary for water pressure in that area and it certainly is not. So I think that we have to take some of this information with a grain of salt as well. I think that's all I have. Mike's here if you have questions for either of us.
I have a little more that I'd like to add for the public.
Sure, yeah.
Getting a lot of questions on that, on whether or not we'll have plenty of water available. So one of the things in that that I want to talk about is what we do have. The new south tower, which replaced the west tower, is a 750,000 gallon water tank. The northeast tower is a 500,000 gallon water tank. At the treatment plant, we have another storage unit that holds 1 million gallons of water. And two miles east of town, Lewis and Clark has another tower that holds 1 million gallons of water. So we have on any day 3,250,000 gallons of water available and that for use in the city. Our typical day last month was only 620,000 gallons per day. Last summer, it ranged anywhere from 900,000 to upwards of 1.1 million gallons a day when people are watering lawns and watering their gardens and so forth. So we do have plenty of water available and we have not had a water restriction since 2017 when we had the Big Sioux Mini Haha connection. So the other thing is, is we are blending our water with 70% of it from our local wells and 30% from the Lewis and Clark system. So we have available additional water, you know, that can be drawn from the Lewis and Clark system to push through all of these to service the city of Madison. So another thing is, is that there's quite a height difference between the west water tower and the other two towers. And so if it were to be brought online for whatever reason, the town would have to go back to being zoned. And when you do that, you'd have less water pressure on the west side of town and a higher water pressure on the east side of town. So with the new water tower, replacing the old water tower, the water tower that we're talking about at 504 Northwest Fourth Street, I do not see that as needed anytime in the future. So just wanted to answer some of the questions that I've received and some of the others that have been received by others. So with that, I'll open it up for more discussion.
I guess to add to that, I'd just like to look at the financial side of that aspect. Looking at the costs in order to maintain the water tower, the first four years, we're looking at about roughly $590,000 with an additional $14,500 with roughly 3.5% increase year after year. So looking at that alone, the 10-year cost is roughly 3/4 of a million dollars. And our total contract revenue is roughly 500,000. So we'd be losing about a quarter of a million dollars over 10 years on that. Now, if we go the monopole route and actually demolish it, we're looking at about $150,000 cost to remove it, doing the lead mitigation. Obviously, that's an issue. There's been some complaints about chipping in yards near the area. Outside of that, that's what we're seeing. What we're not seeing are the smaller particles that are obviously getting into the air and outside the area. So it's not something, or it's something that would need to be addressed. So looking at demolition, installation of a monopole, you're probably looking at a 10-year cost of roughly $250,000 depending on the style of monopole. And with the revenue of 500,000, we'd actually be looking at a positive 250K. So I don't see where it would be financially feasible or responsible to actually maintain the water tower at this point. So I would make a motion to proceed with demolition pending other discussion.
Mike, when did that go out of service, that water tower?
January 2024.
So for two years, it has not been utilized?
Right.
I am also of the opinion that it makes sense to demolish it. What I do have questions about is the timeline on when that would need to happen. Given that our budget next year is already very tight, is this something that we can wait and try to build into the 2027 budget? Or is it something that we need to move on and get going on next year?
I remember from last meeting too, when Jurey was talking about, is it going to fall down? It's not going to fall down. I, we probably will, it'd probably be a good idea to wait till 2027 and work that in that budget. The only, the only issue I see is there might be a small portion of the ladder that would have to be replaced with the damage on there and having the crews go up there and actually change there, because they got some 5G upgrades that we're doing. I'd have to get with USG who did the initial inspection. Yes, Mayor.
As I read through, you know, the different options in that, we do have an option of removing the tank and keeping that or removing the whole thing and putting up a monopole. And so I think we need, you know, a little more research in that, in that. So I would see the 2027 as being a reasonable time period too.
That's not going to fall over.
No. Other questions or comments?
Can you guys hear me all right?
Yes.
Yeah, say, I just add the fact that Dan mentioned that this is a safety concern too with the lead paint flaking. So I would need to better understand, you know, how much that's happening. I realize that structurally it's okay, but I do have concerns about that lead paint flaking. So my, I would also second Dan's motion to demolish and install a monopole. And I'd like to better understand, you know, how big of a safety concern the flaking paint is and we can determine of how soon we want the project to proceed.
Mike, do you have any thoughts on that?
I do with the, if we're going to look and just see how much lead is actually going to go in there, is that something that we're going to be willing to spend money on to have somebody come do and try to capture and see how much lead is actually falling off that tower? I know there's going to be a cost involved in that as well.
Are you able to see any visible lead paint or anything?
I don't know if lead based or not, there's paint chips on the ground, on the ground underneath the tower.
Sure.
Yep. Mike, can you remind us on the terminations of the existing agreements? If we decide to demolish the tower, we can enter into new contracts with the, we can negotiate new contracts with both cell carriers. So we don't need to go through the 12-month termination period? Not if we demolish. Okay. Because, and the only reason we don't have to is because of the monopole installation. There's really no timeline. It's whenever we could get that tower demolished. And then they would come in with that temporary tower and they just flop over their cell equipment and demolish the tower, install the monopole and then reattach their equipment.
You just answered what I was going to ask. Thank you. Other questions or comments? We do have a motion.
Can I slightly alter that motion if possible? That way I can account for what he was looking for. I would say I'd make a motion with the intent that we're going to demolish it, potentially put up a monopole and have you look into the cost it would take to determine whether or not we have to take action immediately or if we can extend that to 2027. The nice thing about that, it'll actually help with the propagation study that they're doing, so that'll help determine as well how we proceed going forward.
So absolutely.
That would be my motion to at least continue with this process.
It was originally seconded by Kelly?
If he wants to resecond that.
I will resecond that with Dan's new motion.
Other discussion?
Can you repeat that motion with a little more high knowledge?
I tend to.
Clarity, sorry.
A little more definition?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll make a motion to.
There are a lot of potentials and stuff.
I'll make a motion to proceed with the intent to demolish the water tower and also allocate the funds to look into what it would take to determine whether we need to do that process immediately or we can wait another year.
Okay, so I'm hearing the motion as the, the motion would be to demolish the tower. You're just not saying when that has to be done. You want to make sure we're putting some thought into the right timing on that. Okay.
Are you comfortable with your second?
I will resecond that motion once again.
Sounds good. Other discussion?
Is there a perfect timeline, Mike, for this project or there's really no?
Both, both construction companies that we solicited bids from would just like by next, next fall to, as a timeline, if we decide to do it within this next year for fire hazards and that type of thing.
Fire hazards?
When they're torching the tower, if they're to demolish the tower.
Oh, I got you.
When they got to torch the tower, because they have to put blankets and everything out to try to catch that. So they'd like that timeframe where it's a little bit cooler out.
What would be the absolute max end date? You would think or feel comfortable with?
November 1st.
Oh.
Of next year.
Of next year, okay. Of 2026.
2026. If you decided to do it in that year.
Yeah, but then.
You're saying construction season wise, the latest, you would want to see that done by November 1st, but if we could do it in 27, it'd probably be a similar.
Similar timeline.
Same timeline.
Yep. Bid in the spring and then demolish in the, in the fall, late fall timeframe.
Other comments?
But again, it's nothing we need to do soon, right? It's safe.
Tower's not going anywhere.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? We do have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Mike. Under new business, resolution number 2025-25, setting time of city commission meetings. Jameson, you want to address that?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last meeting, you had discussion on timing of meetings with some interest in moving one of your regular meetings to noon. And so staff have prepared this resolution, which moves the first meeting of the month to be at noon and keeps the second meeting of the month at 5:30. We did ask for public feedback as well and we only received three responses. All three were in support of keeping the meetings at 5:30, saying that noon is a challenge. Not everybody can make meetings at noon. So that was a public feedback we had. And again, the resolution sets those times. I think the only question would be is when you'd want to have this effective by? The resolution as it is written now is, it would be effective upon, upon passage if you pass it. So then the first meeting in December would be the first one at noon. If you wanted to see it effective at a different day, you could easily amend the resolution to accommodate that. I'll stand by for questions.
Questions or comments?
Jameson, you did look into schedules. This wasn't just a coin flip on which meeting.
I did look into schedules. There wasn't one meeting or the other that came out ahead as far as one that would be more strategic to be at noon or more strategic to be at 5:30. But the last meeting was mentioned to do the first one at noon, so that's just the direction that I went.
Other questions or comments?
I would propose we make this effective beginning in 2026.
Can we take that to be a motion to amend to, and I can add in the clause upon signage.
I will make that motion to amend the resolution to make this effective beginning in 2026.
I'll second.
Okay, I was just going to quickly look and see that would be, January 5th would be the first noon meeting then in 2026. Okay. Any other discussion? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
And that was a motion to amend, so now you're back to the main motion of passing the resolution.
Okay. Jenny, do you want to make the motion then?
I will move to adopt the, adopt the resolution number 2025, 25, time of city commission meetings to the first meeting of the month being held at noon and the second meeting being held at 5:30 beginning in 2026.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Number 12, resolution 2025-26, assign fund balances for reserves. Jameson or Amy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A few meetings ago, you may remember that we had unassigned various fund balances and this was per direction from Department of Legislative Audit. Once upon a time, cities had lots of reserves that they had kept in place for, for different activities. And the way that things are now between Legislative Audit and GASB standards, the Government Accounting Standards Board, they want to make sure that anything that's put into assigned accounts are specifically for purposes that are intended for the next five years. And so we are now going back to looking at what meets those guidelines and assigning reserves accordingly for, for those, for those outlays. We can adjust these in the future if needed and we likely will. So when those projects come up that we've planned with the next five years that we're setting money aside for, we'll have to use those funds to take those from those assigned funds to be used. And there'll be other things that, that we'll want to plan for the next five years as well too. So this isn't something that gets set in stone and never touched again. We can certainly make amendments as needed down the road. Amy, anything you want to add?
Yeah, just simply that these are for enterprise funds and not general funds.
Oh, yes.
Those will be looked at at a later date.
That is going to be my question. Thank you. Any other questions? Comments? Not? Do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve resolution number 2025-26, assign fund balances for reserves.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Number 13, approve supplement to agreement with Heartland Energy for use of demand adjusted advantage program. And we have two guests here. If you two would not mind coming up to the table where the microphone is, we'd really appreciate it.
I'll give a little bit of background on this while they're coming up. So as this says, this is amendment to our original agreement with Heartland. That agreement was signed way back in September of 1994. And so this amends that, that allows us as a customer to be able to take advantage of Heartland's demand adjusted advantage program, which acronym is DATA, which tells me that they really wanted this to say DATA and they wanted to make sure that that got done accordingly. But, and so this, this is a new rate program that they have created to try to incentivize data centers to come to their communities. And there's a few different layers to that and that's why we invited them to come and speak to you today so you can ask any questions of them and hear it directly from the experts.
And for the benefit of those at home, if you'd state your names and slide that microphone closer to you, because one of the difficulties that we have is, maybe it won't come closer. You might have to move closer to it.
I'm Nate.
Go to put this on Facebook and that people complain that they don't, I can't understand it here.
Sure. I'm Nate Jones. I'm the chief operations officer at Heartland Energy and I've been there for 20 years.
Mike Malone, the chief financial officer, Heartland Energy.
Would you mind explaining to the public that what we're really looking at? Because if I do it, I know I'm going to mess it up.
I think we just flipped a coin here to see what's going over this. Heartland's board directors recently approved a special rate for, I know we're using the word data center, but it's really more like Bitcoin mining centers that are interruptible. So we've had numerous entities reach out to us or customers inquiring if there's a different rate that would be more into, you know, what they're seeing throughout the nation and to get their costs, kind of where it needs to be for these types of loads. And the big thing is with these types of loads, they ask and they're required. They would like these interruptible rates, so you can shut them off and then you can get a discount through that typically through your energy supplier. Background is, we have a contract with City Madison, really just has a demand and an energy rate. A couple of years ago, we did have an energy one incentive rate. That was a little different to incentivize new loads to come to Madison, 500 KW to a megawatt. I think there's a threshold there and then there's a special rate for that. So to be able to use our special rate, we came up with an agreement for the city to, you know, accept if you like that, so we can pursue some of these loads within the city limits. There is, it's different than a typical rate from us. It is some, just kind of probably go down the rabbit hole a little bit, but these entities, they can shut off at a certain period of time, get down to a minimum load. So we don't have to require that or have that large amount of reserves for that. For an example, on a 10-megawatt interruptible data center, they can typically get down to about 3% or 300 KW. So instead, our current rate structure, we would build a city Madison at 10-megawatts, right? Because we don't have a different rate structure for that. But given they can get down to 300 KW and we don't have to have those reserves based on the Southwest Power Pool's requirements, then we only charge you that 300 KW and you pass that cost on to them. So some uniqueness to that compared to your normal contract rates. So we're trying to get around, not around is not the right word, but implement a rate structure that works with their type of business also. The other thing is it's a market pass-through for energy, so that when the market price is really high in the Southwest Power Pool, that's their decision if they want to shut off or not. The risk is on them. It's not on Heartland. It's not on the city of Madison. So they have the ability to control their own cost structure. If it's $100 a megawatt hour and it still works in their, in their cost structure, they can still run or they can ramp it back at that point in time. That is all a pass-through from us to you, to them. And then where the city really has an advantage is that we're going to mark that up with a given fixed margin on every kilowatt hour. So approximately half a cent per kilowatt hour for every kilowatt hour, no matter if that kilowatt hour in the market is negative $20 or $1,000, you're going to make a half a cent. So the load factors are so high, whereas you, it's a lot of kilowatt hours at a half a cent. So it adds up pretty fast over a period of time. So all the costs are passed on to the data center, whether it be wheeling, transmission. So that should and will really insulate the rest of your customers, residents, other businesses from any costs associated to this data center, whether it be wheeling, transmission, energy costs and also demand costs. So it's all, it's all straight pass-through. In the agreement, we're going to set up if one comes. We're not saying one is going to come today, but without this program in place, there's really no opportunity to really pursue one either for the city of Madison in, inside your service territory. So all the costs are passed down. So all the costs are passed on, including infrastructure improvements related to that entity also. So that is in the agreement also, so they're going to pay the transformer or whatever it may be to interconnect your your substation there. So should insulate the customers, your residents from, you know, any cost exposure to that. So hopefully get the upside of the additional revenues and and not the cost, obviously, from that. So.
Nate, do you have anything to add?
Just pause there and see if there's any questions.
Any questions or comments?
Are there any other communities in the area that have this rate or have already signed on to allow this rate? Or are you guys just introducing it?
This rate would be available to all of our customers. We do have a handful that have accepted it or are looking at the same supplement to the agreement like you are tonight.
So there's a minimum of five megawatts, and this might be more of a question for Mike. I'm not sure. I'm just curious how that compares to some of our existing large loads. What's, does anybody know what some of our largest loads are?
It's a good question.
I think global polymers, a little over two megawatts to three. I think your largest customer in town is Manitou. They've kind of taken their growth isn't as much as they've expected recently with economic downturn there. But it's at least double of what you have currently, based on our estimates.
It's significantly larger than anything we currently have on the system.
Correct. And the other big difference between, say, global or Manitou is the load factor we're requiring them to have, that eighty percent threshold. So I'd have to look at the data, but Manitou, global, they're probably at most probably sixty percent on a good day. Global is, I know we've got like a customer in Volga where Jameson moved from, the soybean plant, they're at like sixty percent of their load factor. So eighty percent is really high, you know, to operate at five megawatts all the time, you know, eighty percent of the year.
What a load factor is is just the average amount of energy they use based on their peak. So if their peak is three megawatts and they're using fifty percent or their load factor is fifty percent, on average, they're consuming one and a half megawatts each hour. So these data centers, if they're a ten megawatt facility, they're they're using ten megawatts most hours of the year. Upwards of ninety-five percent capacity factor.
The program says a minimum of five megawatts. Is that standard or what do you typically see for size of these endeavors?
It's all based on economics of the customer themselves. Most Bitcoin customers want to come in with a larger facility, because if they have to make investments in the infrastructure, which we are requiring them to do, they like to have an economies of scale that justify them coming. So they like to be ten, twenty megawatts at the minimum.
Thank you.
You can do smaller installations, but they typically like to come here with it some some substance.
Thank you.
Thought I was reading somewhere in that around Clear Lake area. There was one looking at that area. Are you familiar with that at all?
So a lot of what you hear in the news are artificial intelligence data centers, which are vastly different from what we are looking at and what we've designed our program for. We can't really accommodate an AI, artificial intelligence data center, because they do not want to be interruptible and we do not have the resource to to serve them. The interruptible rate does allow them to, as Mike said before, they have some ability to get down to the three percent of their peak, which is only what we have to cover. The the ones that you hear in the news are upwards of a hundred megawatts installations and they're requiring a hundred megawatts of resource to be behind their installations, which Heartland doesn't have. So.
Other questions or comments?
So you mentioned the the expenses are passed on to the the user. You know, what what safeties would be in place if this load decides to up and leave? Is there a contract? I guess.
Financial safeties?
Yes, financial and just, yeah.
Yep. This program is new, new to us, new to you, so we would work throughout a lot of those safety measures from a financing side. We believe that the city should and we would like to adjust your billing so that you don't bill out a month at a time, so you can bill them more frequently. The miners that we've been in conversation with, this is pretty common for them. They also are common to put up a deposit and kind of use that as, when we say deposit, larger deposits, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars of deposit, you know, a month or two worth of operating expenses. And kind of use that as your their own or your checkbook for them, so you have some financial assurances on on the payment stream.
Then I imagine this, with our, with the city's WAP allocation, this would put, have no effect on that. It's a complete separate.
You're already exceeding WAP allocation every every month, so it really doesn't impact that at all.
Or the current.
And you're not blending this type of load with your existing load. So they're not, this load isn't getting any advantage of your WAP allocation that's at a lower cost.
It's a standalone.
It's a standalone contract pass-through of SPP market costs. So you don't get that advantage of that stability that you have with the WAP allocation. They do not, excuse me.
Other questions or comments?
With this being an interruptible load and as you just said, separate, it would not cause our peak load to increase?
Yes, it would. It would from some billing met, some billing, I guess, widgets. I can't think of the identifier, but if you had, add ten megawatts of Bitcoin load to your system, it is going to increase your peak by ten megawatts from a transmission perspective. So East River will be billing you out ten megawatts more of wheeling charges. SPP will be billing you out ten megawatts more likely of transmission charges. Our program is designed so that all of those charges are passed on to the Bitcoin load.
Okay, that's what I was getting.
Yes.
It's not a, it's not a liability to the city.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. But I want to be clear that the answer is yes. But our program passes the, yes.
Other questions or comments?
Will these contracts, you know, specify noise or anything on the the operation of it?
You could have them specify noise in the agreements that when the miner, you know, comes and you vet them out, when it comes to the deposits, those type of things, you could also establish a volume level. We've seen those like measured at the middle of the street, whatever the adjacent street is, you know, lower than so many decibels. We've personally visited multiple multiple sites of air-cooled units, and that's probably the most common. They don't really use water. These types of units don't. And we had our, you know, our hearing device out there that was measuring and Nate and I talking at a decent level was louder than the the units were at. So I think it was right around eighty-two decibels was the the volume.
Similar to a transformer, probably.
Yeah, it's a hum, a fan. Yeah. And that was right next to it, you know. So I think by the time you get a little bit further away, street level, that's going to be a little bit different as far as volume.
And you touched on water. This will not require water to cool.
At this point in time, it does not. The ones that we are talking to are all air-cooled, but there is a water-cooled option, just to be clear here. But the water-cooled options are self-contained, so, you know, think of a floor heat. You fill it up one time. It circulates around. It isn't constantly using water like the large AI versions are.
They're likely to have an office, potentially one to two employees. And what they would tell you is, we'll need water, but enough to flush a toilet and have a sink.
And one of the things in that, in reading and booking and that and talking with our MADC, is that right?
Yeah, you got it.
Yeah. MADC is, if it was, if there's one possibility, the south part of the industrial park does have land available. And that, and that would be far enough away and not that it should take care of any sound, and then the utilities are there for whatever else they might need. So we do have an option of locations.
And that would all come with next steps in adopting this program. And then we would start talking to some Bitcoin companies and and figure out a spot to site the the actual facility and, yeah, we'd cut, we'd, you'd be in, you know, involved in that every step of the way.
I would add as well that the zoning regulations still apply to all this, so we're, as we're talking about things like noise, this isn't something that could be zoned and situated to residential neighborhood. So you're going to be looking at likely an industrial area for a use such as this.
Other questions or comments? Personally, I think it's an opportunity to explore for the City of Madison.
Right, if anything, if anything does reach the next level, obviously, we'll be probably talking again on how we, what the next steps are.
Absolutely.
So another layer of protection for the city.
That's correct. Other questions or comments?
I'd just note that Heartland Energy is my place of employment, so I will abstain from any vote.
Noted. Thanks, Kelly.
Amy, I'll do the same. This will be quite the predicament. I'll be the third. Abstaining as well.
Okay, so that puts it down to two people, Jenny and I. And that is not a majority.
Yeah, I'll think about this one a little bit. You guys always like to keep me on my toes, right?
Okay, now I want to ask you from the standpoint of, when it comes to abstentions, are you financially benefited because of what the city would, is entering into? If it doesn't financially include you yourself, then you do have the ability to vote on it, even though you may be an employee or a customer of Heartland.
I can maybe expand on that a little bit. As as a few of you remember, I like to do conflict of interest reminders once a year. I'm trying to get into the habit of. And so what the mayor is speaking of is a direct pecuniary conflict of interest when you yourself benefit or are harmed by a decision that would be before you as a board. Other conflicts of interest certainly exist, whether it's employer that's impacted or a family member or if there's a non-financial but still an impact to to you. Those are all different conflicts of interest that can be noted. The only one that you're required to refrain from is direct pecuniary, direct financial conflicts of interest. It doesn't mean you can't recuse yourselves from other decisions as well due to other conflicts of interest, but it's it's your decision at that point. Does that help at all, hurt?
I'm going to ask you, Mike, would this rate change involve altering existing agreements that I have that I'd have to do work for any software or anything like that? In regards to invoicing, that's the only thing I'm.
It could.
Okay.
I mean.
Then I would have to abstain. I would rather err on the side of caution than, I mean, potentially.
And again, when we're looking at conflicts of interest, is do you as an individual benefit from it? Even though the employer you work for may be a part of the process?
That'd still be yes for me.
Okay.
I'm going with the legal advice I was given this afternoon, so. Yes.
Okay, I would suggest, I mean, there's nothing particularly urgent about this. We could wait a meeting. So I would suggest let's table this to the next meeting and we can consult with city attorney. We can talk through those conflicts of interest in more detail and and if there are three abstaining, if we can proceed with a vote of two. That's not something that I'm a hundred percent confident in the answer right now, so. Yeah, is that acceptable to the group?
It is.
Okay. In that case, motion to.
Need a motion to table it?
Yeah.
Motion to table.
In that case, I will make a motion to table the supplement to agreement with Heartland Energy for use of data program to a future time.
Do I have a second?
I would say, I would say you guys consecutive, you're not voting on the matter, you're just tabling it, so I think conflicts of interests are fine here.
Kelly seconded.
Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second to table. Any other discussion? If not, do we have, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, gentlemen, for being here, yes. All right, number fourteen, approval of a change order number three, Madison Water System Improvement Segment Four, Metro Construction Incorporated. Is this Ryan or Jameson?
Yeah, I'll let Ryan tackle all four of the change orders.
Thank you. So for a change order three here, rather than just going through the numbers and the costs are reasonable, although I'll do that, too. I did want to explain this change order a little bit more in the circumstances in a factual way. Unfortunately, this issue stemmed from mislocate, misidentifying our utilities, which ultimately means it did result in working costs that probably could have been avoided. This is for a service, a sanitary service line that was bored through by Metro Construction. When we looked back at the photographs, there were no markings on the ground. There was no way of Metro Construction knowing that that line was there, however, they boarded, as luck would have it, directly through the middle of that sanitary service, so the the business had back up into their into their business. Definitely not assigning blame here, and the only reason, and actually, I'm trying to do the opposite. The only reason I bring this up is I want, I think there's some importance in having the full context be understood by the commission and by the public. I don't like change orders with increases ever, because you try to, you try to do the best that you can to make sure you don't go over. But in situations where we've have to explain preventable costs, I feel it's important that you know that we're all aligning how we handle these type of situations so that they don't happen as we go forward in the future. Part of this, I think, and I'm speculating a little bit and speaking for some staff, is that our GIS system was not up to date. It was not, it was not complete. So step one, we need to make sure that our GIS system is updated. This was, this went through sort of a transition phase where it used to be in engineering and then when this building was built, it had transitioned over to utilities. And I think that the staff in that position was learning still, so it didn't get updated properly. And then the second thing is just making sure everyone is doing their diligence and having accountability to each other within our teams. I don't think it's the person that actually went out and painted the lines on the ground that has a hundred percent of the liability here. I think I could, I could have went out there and went, well, we have a building over here and we have no line on the ground to tell us where the sanitary service is. So that's the second thing we do, I think, is making sure we don't have projects, you know, buildings near project sites that we don't have services accountable for. So I appreciate your understanding of this and I appreciate how this group helps reinforce the importance of diligence and accountability. And I just want to be accountable to you internally, publicly. As for the numbers that I said I would get back to, the amount of this change order is is a rather large increase. Sixty-seven thousand, three hundred twenty-four dollars and twenty cents. When we had received a call from the business that they had sewer backing up, we had went out and our water and sewer crews had identified the the source of the problem through some televising. Unfortunately, the fix isn't very simple. The fix is remobilizing that contractor to the site, removing a lot of asphalt, concrete, pavement that we didn't intend on removing. Um, unfortunately, the fix isn't very simple, um, the fix is remobilizing that contractor to the site, removing a lot of asphalt, concrete pavement that we didn't intend on removing because it was a boring project. Um, there's a lot of trench backfill that needs to be imported. Then we have both removal of the existing water main that was bored in previously, as well as the repair to the sanitary sewer pipe and then, uh, reconnection of, of that. So, um, quite a bit of work here, um, in looking at the numbers, I would say they're not unreasonable, I would say that they are fairly high. Um, but by selecting Metro Construction to do this work via change order, um, we are able to use S R F dollars toward this, we've reached out to Daner. And just to make sure that this was drinking water, S R F eligible, that keeps this in our loan, uh, rather than trying to, um, come up with this money through our operating costs, so, um, we, we, meaning Banner and the city staff would, uh, recommend approval of this change order.
Questions or comments?
Is that then gonna adjust the current fee that we have for the S R F loan?
Um, so all of our S R F loan is, is under, you know, one pot of money.
Yep.
And we are, we are under our loan amount, and so this wouldn't put us over, this would keep us in good standing. In fact, you, you, you don't want to utilize it for something like this, it's an unexpected cost and could have been avoided, but, um, you know, it, it helps us to expend all of our S R F loan. Because if you give some of it back, there's actually a penalty for giving the money back. So, I don't want to expend it in this way, but we do have room under our total amount, um, part of that is due and part to the next change order, and I'll get into that.
Other questions? Comments? If not, do we have a motion?
We have takeaways, I, I, you know, from this. Mike, tailgate wise, is this something we can implement into some of those processes as well? I mean, just to get another eye on each situation, project, you know, both on the safety side and just the project at hand. Another set of eyes.
Yeah, and that's where my staff wants to work with Mike's staff and make sure that we're both watching out for each other and not, not that we're out there trying to hover over what Mike's guys are doing. We're not, we're not trying to be in their way or anything, but we just need to help each other out, be, be a team here and help with accountability.
You were in this industry, Mike, for a while. You couldn't do this if you were wanting to, you know, intercept those two points, that's pretty bizarre.
I'll make a motion for approval of change order number three, Madison Water System Improvement Segment Four, Metro Construction Incorporated in the amount of, what was it, sixty seven thousand, three hundred twenty-four dollars and twenty cents.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Those opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Number fifteen, approval of change order number four, Madison Water System Improvement Segment Five A, Asphalt Surfacing Company Incorporated. Uh, again, Ryan, do you want to address this one?
Yeah, thank you. So as the letter that you're looking at on the screen now indicates, this is a final balancing change order, uh, for the Madison Segment Five A project. This would be the South Union Avenue, Southwest Fourth Street project. This is quite a reduction, uh, it's a reduction of two hundred seventy-four thousand, eighty-nine dollars and thirty-nine cents. Uh, included in the agenda packet is a breakdown of all of the items that were increases and items that were decreases. And you can see that we have a number of items that we didn't utilize the, um, estimated amount for, there's about fifty items. And so this is really just accumulation of a lot of smaller things add up to a rather large number. And when I mentioned on the previous change order that we do have room in the S R F loan, part of that is due to this coming in, you know, less than expected. Um, so this change order would bring the total contract price of five A to four million, one hundred eighty-six thousand, seven hundred forty-four dollars and sixty-one cents.
Questions or comments?
I'll make a motion to approve change order number four, Madison Water System Improvement Segment Five A, Asphalt Surfacing Company Inc., a decrease of two hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars, e, two hundred and seventy-four thousand, eighty-nine dollars and thirty-nine cents.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Number sixteen, approval of change order number five, Park Creek Walls Improvement Site Two, Kesselut Excavation and Dirt Work Services. And again, Ryan, do you want to address this one?
Yeah, thank you. Um, so this one's also being presented as final adjustment of quantities, um, this is for the, uh, Park Creek Wall Site Two project. Uh, this change order reconciles those overrun and overrun quantities. Uh, the net increase in the contract is a whopping total of eight hundred seventy-seven dollars and twenty-five cents, of which the city pays fifteen percent. And so this is roughly a hundred and thirty-two dollar change order to the city. This was just a couple of minor cleanup items, um, we had a number of things that were both, uh, you know, reductions, deductions and, and additions. And the, uh, the total amount that, as that comes out is, is pretty close, so.
Questions or comments?
Make a motion to approve change order number five, Park Creek Walls Improvement Site Two, Kesselut Excavation Dirt Work Services.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Those opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Number seventeen, approval of change order number two, reconstruct hangar taxi lanes, airport drive and parking lot with Sukup Construction Incorporated. And again, Ryan, would you want to address this one?
Yeah, so this, uh, this change order has a couple of, uh, items to it. Um, one is that this is also a balancing change order, this would revise the contract amount to reflect the final, uh, quantities that were installed on actual field conditions. Um, that's component one. Component two is excess balance grading and hauling of, uh, some waste area on the south end of the project. And then the third component to it is, uh, some additional seeding and mulching, uh, for excavation waste area. The, the main thing here to, to take away is that the, uh, planned waste area saved the project money actually during the bidding to allow for the contractor to bid, a lower cost for the excavation balance by not hauling excess dirt offsite. So this change was needed because the contractor had to grade that south apron waste area at a standard positive drainage slope. Um, so not all that balance of cubic yards was able to be hauled onto the waste area stockpile. So, that's kind of that unclassified excavation, um, that we knew that we would have to address at the end of the project. It is a rather small amount and they, and that portion is eligible for both F A funds and South Dakota D O T funds. So, really the amount that, that the city owes is only two and a half percent of that. And so, um, the balancing change order is actually a deduction. That excess unclassified excavation is a little bit of, uh, increase. And then the, uh, third component, that seeding and mulching area, um, that was simply just a matter of the plans, they had underestimated the area. They underestimated that by about an acre, so this includes some mulching in it and some excavation and seeding, so. In the end, as it, as it all settles out, uh, the change resulting in this change order is two thousand nine hundred eighty-seven dollars and fifty-five cents.
Questions or comments?
I'll make a motion, uh, to approve change order number two, reconstruct hangar taxi lanes, airport drive and parking lot to Sukup Construction in the amount of two thousand nine hundred eighty-seven dollars and fifty-five cents.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Number eighteen, uh, city updates, Jameson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Alright, for this month's updates, uh, we'll go to the next slide, you can see a number of active projects. I expect some of those to be cut down as you just approved, uh, change, final adjustment of quantities, change orders on three different projects. So we're nearing the end of the construction season and some of these should be falling off. Next slide. Um, so for many of these projects, we're in punch list phase, I think that's true for the, the Park Creek Wall Site Two, the airport project, uh, both of them, as well as segments five A and five B from S R F, those are all in punch list phase or, or have even been completed, so those are moving along and finishing up nicely. Um, projects that are still ongoing on the next slide is, uh, Egan Avenue Reconstruction, so a few weeks ago, we did approve that full closure of the, of the project. And that is allowing it to go much smoother as they have more space to maneuver equipment and they can get multiple crews in to, to, uh, continue construction on phases two A and two B. Um, so we've done video inspections of the, the water and sewer mains and then a remaining phase two A, two B subcut operations between Fourth Street and Fifth Street. And we're moving towards the base course installation on those phases as well. Any questions on Egan Avenue, or Ryan, anything to add?
I don't think I have much to add, just, uh, I've been impressed with their amount of, uh, you know, the amount that they've gotten done in the last couple of weeks. Um, I think we're still set up for paving to be finished, the mainline paving by November fifteenth, there might be some items that lag beyond that. Uh, we did ask the contractor to provide an updated, uh, schedule to review tomorrow and then we'll have our onsite meeting with them on Wednesday and we'll be able to kind of pin down where they think they are, so.
Alright, moving on to restricted use site, we held our contested hearings last week, Monday through Thursday, that was down in Sioux Falls. And so the next step there is to, uh, for the attorneys to provide the legal briefs and filings and then the hearing before the Board of Minerals and Environment will be sometime in twenty twenty-six. Library ramps, uh, very excited to say that the, the railings, which is the, been the final piece of the puzzle, uh, they've been fabricated, they were sent to the, um, the company to be galvanized and we were getting them back today, so those, that installation will be this week. Questions on either of these projects?
I do have a question about the restricted use site, um, so the next, the next phase of that is not going to happen until twenty twenty-six sometime? In the permitting, next phase in the permitting process?
Yep, so we're still slowly marching towards that, that permit hearing, um, the hearings last week were a big step in that. And once the legal filings get finished, then the Board of Minerals and Environment can gather all information and make a determination. That hearing date has not yet been set, uh, we do have the, but money budgeted in twenty twenty-six budget to develop the site, should we get the, the permit to do that? Um, and that's, that's, uh, I guess what's in our control and a little bit, a lot of it outside of our control. Does that answer your question?
Yes.
I'm, I was gonna say, I was gonna add a little bit to that, uh, the, uh, meeting that this last week was, uh, with the Department of Ag and Natural Resources, which is the first step in that, and then it goes on to the Board of Minerals and Environment. So, uh, we have a two-step process and, and we were at, uh, at the in-between stage right there, and so yes, then it'll move on to the next step.
Yeah, I'll, I'll have to adjust that a little bit, so the Department of Agriculture, Natural Resources were a party to this as well, so they were a big part of that. Uh, but the hearings were before the Office of the Hearing Examiner, so there's a Ministry of Law judge, he had his hearings last week. And it's that Ministry of Law judge that will put together a final, uh, report and recommendations that gets passed on to the B M E, so, one step at a time. Any other questions? Okay, next slide then. Uh, the armory floor has been moving along very well, the subfloor has been fully installed and, uh, the next steps are to do sanding, which I believe was already started, uh, maybe the last week. And then sealing, then we get those floor lines painted for the different courts and then we do another layer of sealer. And that, uh, is again, moving along very quickly and should be done well before the, uh, the deadline on that project. Also complete are, are sidewalk projects, so the twenty twenty-four project didn't get done last year, the contractor was gonna come back to do that this year. And, uh, the twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five projects are now complete, and so you can see the, the list of streets where those installations were completed on.
Question on that, Ryan? If, if the contractor did work for a private, um, homeowner, will that contractor come back and do the dirt and reseeding? Or is that, was that part of the contract?
So if they did it as part of our city, um, sidewalk program, that was incidental to the cost of the sidewalk. So yes, the contractor is responsible to come back and do the grading and seeding. If they hired them on the side, even if it was our contractor or a local one, I'm not, I'm not sure what kind of agreement they have with them.
But if it was assessed.
If it was through our contract, yes, it would be done.
Okay.
Okay, we'll move on to, uh, an award recognition we wanted to make note of. Our Sergeant Aaron Talich received the Best in Lake County Law Enforcement Award, and so we were very pleased to see, see him come home with that award and congratulations to Sergeant Talich. Um, updates from the Madison Public Library, um, a couple of different, very exciting financial news, so, uh, or, or events. So first off, they are receiving a ten thousand dollar gift from the Carnegie Foundation, so the library is a Carnegie building and, um, the foundation is giving this gift to them simply for, uh, continuing to, uh, have that legacy of, of operating as a library after all these many, many years. And so that's a ten thousand dollar gift, uh, for them to use how they deem appropriate. And then Mary Severson is also doing a matching gift opportunity, and that's up to twenty thousand dollars matching gift, um, and that can be used towards, um, the, the, the facility as well. So, very happy to see some very generous donations from, from multiple sources coming from the public library.
Question, the matching gift opportunity is for the public to donate and she'll match?
Uh, that's, that's my understanding, and then I'm thinking that the Carnegie Foundation gift might be able to contribute towards that as well. Um, we had a couple of different events, uh, for adults, we had Step Into Digital Basics, that's a monthly class that's been started for, for adults who want to learn how to do some digital basics, as the name implies. So that can be emails, um, downloading apps, and then also being aware of, uh, dangerous websites and, and similar topics. And then they also had Poké Bash, uh, a spinoff of Pokemon, where kids and adults learned, um, more about Pokemon and playing cards and how they are packed with reading and math. We had a city circle at the community center last month and we had a number of residents gathered to, to talk about different topics. We listed a few topics there, but that was a good, good hour-long conversation with people and we always appreciate it when our residents and our, um, citizens can come and, and meet with us and, and ask us whatever questions are on their mind.
And that's what I was gonna ask, right there, you got it.
The, the next, uh, city circle is actually gonna be a kids edition, so we have Commissioner Dipdahl and Fire Chief Minert, who are gonna be at the public library on the twenty-fourth, that's a Monday from five to six P M. And so that's gonna be, uh, an opportunity to, to take this kind of on the road a little bit and put a different spin on it, so kids are gonna be invited, they're gonna have some reading and they're gonna have some educational materials, um, as it relates to the fire department. Um, on the top there, I almost missed the neighborhood narratives, so that's a, a project initiative from the library where they are collecting stories and, um, and quotes and, and just different, um, ideas from, from people in the community who have been, um, residents with a new or, or long-term residence. And those are, are narratives that are gonna be collected by the library and available to the public. And on the right, you see the Family Fun Night, Unearth the Dinosaurs at the library, that'll be November tenth at six thirty P M. And so families can join as, uh, they learn about dinosaur fossils from a D S U professor, um, and paleontologist. Okay, uh, public safety reminder, we have installed those, uh, earlier this year, we installed the warning lights on Ninth Street and Chicago Avenue to assist with, with, uh, children crossing to and from the school. And those crossing guard services have subsequently been, uh, ended, uh, police are still there monitoring the area, making sure that people understand how the new system works, making sure the system's working as, as intended, um, to support the safety of, of the pedestrians in the area. We encourage parents to review crosswalk safety information with children, um, drivers need to be driving slow when, uh, in, in school zones regardless whether there's, there's flashing lights or not. Um, and those, uh, lights, as I said, were installed for safety.
And at that point, I'd like to note also in that, that we have safety lights that are, uh, at the end. that are at the intersection on the four lane by O'Reilly's. And I've gotten a couple of phone calls in that where people had pushed the button to go across, and vehicles did not stop, so please pay attention when you're driving.
We have one remaining opening on the, on our boards, or to note of, so the Housing Redevelopment Commission is still opening on that board, five years in length, and they must be a city resident to sit on that board. And I think that wraps up the updates for the month. Does anybody have any questions? Okay, thank you.
He's saying no questions, and do we have any public comment from anybody online? He's saying none. Under announcements, the next regular commission meeting will be Monday, November 17th at 5:30 p.m. And number 20, do we have a motion to go into executive session?
I'll make a motion to go into executive session pursuant to SDCL 1-25-24.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign? Motion carries. We are in executive session, and we'll move into the next room. Yep, thanks, guys. Thanks, Mike.